When we're looking at pension numbers between someone who likes to have a hobby crunching number, who might not understand that Bob just has a hobby crunching numbers with the way the data has been manipulated, how he is manipulating them forward in hours in this hobby of his. And then the next-
My name is Scott Small. I'll begin by saying thank you, Council President Travis, Councilwoman and Councilmen for letting me speak. I'm speaking tonight regarding PCI 131-14, a resolution requesting former Councilman Cushman to present his pension figures and calculations to the city council. Let me start by saying the presenter is not an actuary nor is he hired, a hired representative of the- What I have gathered after attending many council meetings is that the presenter of PCI 131-14 is such that the facts are these. These numbers were manipulated at his kitchen table as a hobby. The presenter is not an actuary. The presenter has stated that he has obtained these numbers from the actuarial report and asked the actuary if these are his numbers. I highly doubt that he submitted his concluding numbers to the actuary and I strongly feel the actuary would not agree with his findings. I would ask this evening that the city council reconsider the presentation of PCI 131-14 to allow for the following. First, we have the actuary here at the presenter's expense to agree or refute his findings. I'll repeat that, I stuttered a little bit. We have the actuary here at the presenter's expense to agree or refute with his findings. We have the leaders of each respective retirement board present to agree or refute his findings. I feel that giving a kitchen table report that is a hobby of a resident of Warwick does not qualify for a one-sided prejudiced presentation without the experts present to confirm or deny these numbers.
PCI 03-15 requests Mr. Al Marciano, Chair of Warwick Retirement Board, brief a city council during an open hearing on the status of the city pension plan. Intergovernmental.
Just recommended favorable action with amendments.
Favorable action, Councilwoman Vella-Wilkinson. Amendments first.
Thank you, Madam President. I move favorable action. I'd like to discuss the amendments.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You gotta move favorable first.
Well, I move favorable action on PCR 03-15.
Second vice, Councilman Shadron, there you had your hand up. Okay. Now.
Ready? Okay, great. Madam President, as was discussed in committee, based on some of the feedback that we have received from the general public, I would like to provide one amendment to the legislation as it currently reads. I would like to add, let's see, where is it? Could you show me the, I can't read my, one moment, please. I just want to grab the line. No, no, I need the full legislation so I could see what line to put under. Thank you, Councilman. In line 35, I would like to add the following paragraph. Be it further resolved that the city council also requests Mr. Joe Newton, certified actuary for the city of Warwick, attend the same meeting, let's see, with a date certain of March 16th, 2015, for a total presentation of 45 minutes and 15 minutes additional set aside for questions and answers by the general public.
Councilwoman Marolla.
Is that the actuary for the pensions and healthcare or just pensions?
No, for both healthcare and for the pension. No? I'm looking at you. Is this just for the pension?
Yes.
Bill, I'm sorry.
Joe Newton is actually pensions, Gabriel Rota, Smith &amp; Company, the pensions.
Just for the pensions. This resolution was specific to the pensions and instead of having a separate meeting with the actuaries, Councilman, I thought it would make sense to have both members-
And I absolutely agree with you. It's just that we're not gonna have, we're still gonna have a second meeting because healthcare is another pension. So if we could get it done in one night, I wouldn't have an objection to that. It's up to the council. If we want to do it three times in three months, we can do it three times in three months.
Madam President, if I could just respond? Again, my intent, Councilman, is that we have this, this body has this much information in preparation for the budget hearings and I think putting all of that in on one meeting is a little bit much.
Okay, so we'll have another date from the administration if Mr., if I can through the chair to Mr. DePresquale for pensions.
Chuck, Councilman, we're going out to bid right now for healthcare consultant. So-
Well, this has to do with the actuary. When Mr. Carullo stood in your shoes, I even think we passed a resolution, our ordinance, to the effect that in the beginning of every year, when we had the actuaries come in, they would give us a report as to how they're performing and what it looked like our contributions would be for the upcoming years. I think the last time they came, they gave maybe a four or five-year forecast or even longer than that because I remember we were all talking about the spike. I think it was in 2000, next year, actually. If it's not, do you remember what year the spike is?
We talked in a spike for the pension, Councilman?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the actuary, that would be Joe Newton and I do recall that. We would be talking about that, about Police 1 and, I mean, Fire 1 and-
And the healthcare, I think, is totally unfunded so that, I think, just keeps going up and up and up.
Right.
And we'd like to know where that is.
It's your point, right. The healthcare is not funded, right.
Thank you.
Councilman Solomon. I think you're packing. I'm throwing it out there for discussion. I think we're putting too much into a short period of time for a lot of information to be absorbed. I welcome Mr. Marciano coming before the city council and I support that wholeheartedly just as we did Mr. Cushman and, information's good, knowledge is good for all of us, but if we're gonna get Mr. Newton in, which it's gonna cost us to get Mr. Newton and we know there's a cost associated with that, and he's gonna talk about pension and healthcare, then guess what? 45 minutes and 15 minutes isn't enough. You may wanna have to devote the entire evening, as we did in the past, the last time the actuaries were here, because that's how much information is discussed and brought to us. There are gonna be members of our union bodies, there's gonna be members of administration and I'm sure if we coordinate it where the actuary, Mr. Newton is also the actuary, I think, for the state of Rhode Island, if we can coordinate it on the same day that he's scheduled to come for state purposes, we may be able to mitigate some of the cost of having him come before us, you know, as opposed to a separate trip. If he's in Rhode Island that day, speaking up at the State House and we can have him, even if it's a special meeting that evening before the city council, so be it. You know, if we can save the taxpayers money that way, let's do it that way. Relative to Al Marciano, I'd love to have Al come before us. He's a knowledgeable guy. We might wanna have him on a separate evening, but I think that Newton and the actuaries, the volume of information and the questions that are gonna be entertained are really going to, there's not a significant amount of, there's not enough time for us to deal with it. I think Mr. Marciano should be on a separate evening and the actuary, whether it has to be on a special meeting night or when he comes into Rhode Island for state business, try to coordinate it that way.
First of all, I think it's a fantastic idea. It does cost a lot of money, Belize and Texas, and I agree with such a, I think it's a great suggestion. If I could reach out, I could probably see whether or not, because he is the state actuary too. And also, just, you know, with Al being here, I think that's, he's only actually the chairman of the retirement board just for the city pension and I think the actuary being here is gonna tell the entirety of the story in terms of performance and liability. So whether or not you want him on a different day, I mean, really, the actuary is the person that you really are going to give the entirety of the picture. It's no good to say that, you know, just the municipal plan is doing great. I mean, we really have to look at what the liability is for the city today and going forward and Joe would be able to speak to that with the actuarial valuation more so than Al. I can reach out and I'd love to reach out and see whether or not he's gonna be in Rhode Island and when.
Let me reach out tomorrow.
Councilman Connton.
So Billy, if we just held this until Wednesday of next week, would you know, would you think you would know that schedule by then from Mr. Newton?
Again, I'll reach out to him if I can find out tomorrow. If I can find out tomorrow, I could certainly do that.
I happen, I agree with Councilman Solomon, what he said about probably, I mean, I'd love to have Mr. Marciano here as well, that probably could stand and we could schedule that as far as this resolution goes and maybe parse it out to have a second aspect of it for Mr. Newton so we wouldn't need to dock it something new, but if we knew when he was gonna come and we could dovetail on that, it should be at a separate meeting. So I would, I think the best bet is to hold it.
Councilwoman.
Well, go ahead with Councilman Latteson first, that I'll say.
Thank you, Madam President. I concur with this as well. You know what? To just do it in, you know, bits and pieces, in an hour here, an hour there, this is a huge issue in terms of significance and the lies that it impacts and I think that's the way to do it. Let's, you know what? Let's get in the room, let's stay here for the time that we need to stay here, let's focus on that issue and that issue alone and do it in the two meetings, but let's, let's get it done and move on. Whichever direction we need to go, whatever we need to do, let's just do it.
Councilwoman Vella-Wilkinson.
All right, then, Madam President, I withdraw the amendment and then I would, after we vote on that, I would wish to restate the amendment.
Yeah, you can just withdraw. We didn't vote on that yet.
Okay. Then what I would like to do instead is I wish to amend, where are we? PCR 3-5, so that line 34, where it says, members of the city council, members of the public, period, the next sentence would read, date certain for such meeting is March 16th, 2015, total presentation of 45 minutes and 15 additional minutes for questions and answers by the general public, period. A separate meeting, a separate presentation will be provided by Mr., where am I? By Mr. Joe Newton, actuary for the city of Warwick, at a date to be determined. Does that get me away from us having to put that as a separate in front, in front of the council?
I thought we were holding it, but that's okay.
Is that all right?
I believe you need a separate resolution to deal with the Joe Newton, because leaving the resolution open with no date still leaves a scheduling problem for when it gets on the docket for the clerk's office.
What I would like, though, here's my concern, though, through the chair, through the president, through the city council solicitor, we had a fairly large representation of the general public here who had heard that this resolution was going to include the full actuary and I don't want them to believe that we played bait and switch. So I'd at least like comment on the, at the end of 34 that says that Mr. Joe Newton, the city actuary, will be invited at a later date, understanding-
Why don't you just hold it till next Wednesday and then do the whole thing together? I mean, you'd put in a new one for, well, we'll know maybe a date by then and then they can hear you say this about Marciano.
Bill, will that give you enough time, do you believe, by next week? You know what, Madam President, I appreciate the offer, but I want to make sure that Mr. Marciano and the public have as much advance notice as the meeting in March anyway. So let's just go ahead with that one change, please.
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor to Mr. Newton, the city's actuary, to allow him to make a presentation.
Hey, Mr. Newton? Do I, well, do you have a second? Yes, Councilwoman Vella-Wilkinson, you have a second?
I'd like to second, I'd like to second that motion, please.
Okay. All in favor? No one's answering me. Oh, excuse me, please sit down. Please sit down. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Right. Bill, do you want to open it?
Thank you, Madam President, Honorable Members of the Warwick City Council. I would like to introduce our actuary, Joe Newton, from Gabriel Rota &amp; Smith &amp; Company, who are presenting the 2014 actuarial evaluations for Police Fire 1, Police 2, Fire 2, and the Municipal Plan. Also in attendance tonight is Ernie Zimlinsky, our Finance Director, and also the Chairman of the Employees Municipal Pension Plan, Mr. Al Marciani, who will be available for any questions. I would note Joseph Newton is accredited as a Fellow of Society of Actuaries, he's an enrolled actuary and he's a member of the American Academy of Actuaries. Thank you.
Councilman Solomon.
Municipal Fire 2, Police 2, clearly straightforward. This year's contribution, according to the figures we have here, 11.8 million between the three on the city side. I believe that's correct. And this year, you're proposing with this, you classify it as new assumption amortization, not re-amortization. You're showing 15,756,149, is that correct?
For Police Fire 1, correct.
Okay, that's just for that one, Police 1, Fire 1.
Right.
Which exceeds all three of our remaining pensions by almost $4 million.
Absolutely, yeah.
And this new amortization, re-amortization, whatever you want to classify it as, came at your suggestion recently.
Correct.
You recall when you were here, last time I had mentioned to you, how would we be able to meet the obligations of those spiked payments? And as you stated back then, it was your job to point out the results, not to find where the money was gonna come to make those. Do you recall that? Okay. So the other thing I'd like to ask you is percentage-wise, Police 2, Fire 2, Municipal, both what I see in our schedules and what I've seen, the schedules provided to the state, indicate that they don't pose a major portion of our unfunded liability portfolio.
Right.
That Police 1 and Fire 1, would you say is what, 60% of our overall portfolio in unfunded liabilities?
Probably 80%.
More like 80%. And Police 1 and Fire 1, from an unfunded liability standpoint, is in the critical zone. Would it not be under the state classification right now?
Absolutely, yep. And will be for-
So we would be one of the critical entities that the state talks about under their new, under their guidelines and GASP guidelines.
Correct.
And by this amortization, you're saying that's going to alleviate the calculations as the unfunded liability over the long run?
Over 21 years and then it will completely pay for this plan.
Okay. How much of a difference does this new amortization make for us? Would you say it's just going to eliminate the unfunded liability quicker or?
No, go back a couple of slides. Actually, it's gonna eliminate it at the same time. It's just the projected, the peaks have been taken out, but also the volatility and just a much lower trajectory. So the total dollars from the city are expected to be materially less overall to pay for this unfunded liability.
So we eliminated the balloon payments that we brought up last year and how we were gonna, how the city was gonna have the ability to make those balloon payments. You structured the payments.
Right.
They're increasing, as we can all see.
They're still increasing, yep.
They're still increasing and, but they're increasing at a more even rate as opposed to those instances where balloon payments are gonna be due.
Right.
Okay. And isn't there action necessary to be taken by the city to accomplish this?
Well, with my understanding, the retirement boards, retirement boards is part of the assumption set and method set.
Okay, so these assumptions are made with no action having been taken yet, is that correct?
The three pension plan, the Police Fire plans have been approved.
By the city council? Because under city ordinances, that has to come before the city council. I was curious-
You're right. The valuations have not been approved by the city council.
Yeah, because, so these assumptions and what's presenting to us, presented to us, haven't been-
Approved.
Voted in accordance with Warwick city ordinances. So you took it upon yourself to create these charts based on assumptions if the ordinances were changed where you could implement these assumptions.
No, the ordinances gave the flexibility to do this. The city council would then, the city, the ordinances don't get specific enough, don't go to that level of how each one of these, you know, whether we could do this or not. The ordinance says you need to pay for the unfunded over a certain period of time and this is all within that, that period of time.
So who's that decision made by?
The retirement boards is who we made the recommendation to.
Excuse me?
We made the recommendation to the retirement boards.
Okay. You made the recommendation to the city, but who in the city is gonna make the decision to do this if it's not the city council?
Good evening. Historically, any changes of assumptions for the Police 1 and Fire 1 and Police 2 have been made by the Finance Director, myself, and the Fire 2 has been made by the city treasurer.
But historically, Ernie, Police 1 and Fire 1 started off before some of us were born and ordinances have come onto the books and ordinances have been amended on the books where certain authorities have changed and implementation of those things have changed. So you can't go by historical treatment, you have to go by what the law states. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we believe, we believe we were, had the authority to make those changes based on-
I'm not saying it's bad or good, I'm not passing judgment, I'm here to listen to the presentation, which I appreciate because you addressed some of the concerns that I brought up to you last year when you said that wasn't your concern, how we were gonna pay. It was my concern, how we were gonna make those balloon payments because where was the money gonna come from? So I appreciate that fact. I appreciate the issues being addressed. I just want to make sure that it's being addressed in accordance with the law. You know, we've had instances where pension, percentages of pension were increased illegally that had to be turned back because they were increased illegally and that was only with the threat of litigation. You know, this is great. It's kinda like bringing the horse before the cart. I mean, the cart before the horse. I reversed that. Because I think you have to have the authority to implement this and I'll defer to, and not right now because it's a complex area, to our legal counsel to research that issue. But you can't bring the cart before the horse, although I appreciate the concept of eliminating the balloon payment. I mean, I'm not happy about the payments, but they are what they are. I just want to make sure that we're gonna be able to meet those obligations because there are a lot of people in expectation of those benefits that they've been promised. And to meet those obligations, we have to plan ahead of time. We can't be reactive, we gotta be proactive in addressing that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman Marolla.
Thank you, Council President. In your presentation, you had mentioned that there's projections in the materials that you had given us five years out. I didn't see projections on the municipal. Were there?
Are they not in the report?
What's that?
Are they not in the report?
I didn't see them. I'm wondering if you're aware.
You know what? Last year was the first time we put projections in and we didn't do the municipal, so we-
So we have no projections for the five years.
We will provide that this week to the city, so they can provide that to you.
Because when you add those all up, that tells us what we're gonna be paying for the next five years. Now, you also mentioned you made some assumptions and in your plans, you don't really specify what assumptions you changed. You remember a few years ago, you told us about 8% and then we lowered the expectation of 7.5% as far as the return rates. So one of the items that you mentioned was salaries. You don't believe that salaries are gonna go up like they used to. So what assumptions did you make with regard to salaries?
The new assumptions are around 3.5% per year going forward.
3.5% going forward?
Yeah, they were four and we felt that that was higher than likely over the, you know, these couple of decades and 3.5 was more reasonable.
Is that what you had estimated last year too, around 3.5% or did that change?
Last year's would have been on the four.
Would have been what?
Last year's was closer to four.
4%. And did we have any salary increases at all?
Well, it's a long-term assumption, but no, you haven't in the last couple of years had any salary increases at all.
So your projection would have been off by 4% of a liability that we didn't have because we didn't have increases.
Well, assuming that that is never made up, historically, what we've ran into is if you have a period of low, when you come out of that, it's very common to see a period of high to follow it, so.
I'm just talking about a snapshot, how wonderful everything is when the market goes up at double digits, as you said, bull market and you don't have 4% of the debt that you had factored in.
It wasn't.
Yeah, so your projections would change in the positive. Now, you had mentioned some other changes. In your, in one of your reports, you had mentioned future expectations and said, in addition, with the changes in assumptions we recommended and the board approved, the consolidation of all prior amateurization bases into one single base that will be amateurized over the same 25-year period. And I remember that it was a 20-year period that we had talked about in the past.
The different plans have different periods.
Okay, I think, I'm talking about Fire 2. Why don't we focus on Fire 2?
Fire 2 definitely has a 20-year period.
Yeah, 20-year period and in what you're saying here is you're gonna amateurize it over 25 years. That's Section 8, future expectations.
Well, it's the same period of what was remaining on average, so-
So-
Yeah, Fire 2 is not 25. Fire 2 is-
So that's an error? It should be 20?
17. So the, on page eight, it's 17, so that's a typo, we'll get a new report out. It's worth the average was, so we, we had a distribution of all these different bases. So we had some at 1 at 20, we had one at 19, 18, 17, 16, all the way down to three. So if you took that and looked at about what the average was, weighted by dollars, 17 was the average and that's why we went with 17.
And as you had just mentioned, nobody took any votes on these changes because you have in here, the board approved. I don't remember the board approving any of these assumption changes, or am I mistaken? Because you have in here, the board approved, I don't remember the board approving any of these assumption changes, or am I mistaken?
Yeah, it's my understanding that the retirement boards or the, the treasurer of the city, as Ernie just said, did approve them.
When, maybe I could hear from Ernie or Bill, when, when did the board meet to approve these changes and what were the changes?
Councilman, the retirement board did meet to consider the assumptions and the changes that Joe is describing tonight. They did have a vote of the retirement board to approve the assumptions. And as you well know by Article Ten of the Code ordinances, there's a membership of eleven broken up into ex officio elected. I want to say also, in full disclosure, we were alerted by the public that the actual notice for that retirement board meeting was an error, should be forty-eight hours, and it wasn't, it was only twenty-four. So that meeting is null and void, and the retirement board will be meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday, to consider those assumptions. And generally, when you look at the provisions of the retirement board as set out in the code, in the charter, you can actually see there, the retirement board does take a look at the assumptions and the, and actuarial methods of accruing, reviewing liability. And so that would have been the retirement board that would have given their, given their blessing.
Okay, so, so just so we're clear, the assumptions before, and when was this report done? When was this completed?
In the last month.
In the last month, so sometime in February?
Correct, well, yes.
Do you know the date?
I don't know the date.
Because there's no date on the report. So, so when you put in, the board had, they hadn't even met and they didn't have their emergency meeting.
No, we did a, we did a, we did an initial write-up on the assumptions, making the recommendations to the boards for the changes, they approved those, then we did these reports based on those assumptions.
So you're saying the board approved the changes and Mr. De Pasqual saying that they had a vote in March? That, that wasn't any good?
For the municipal plan, it ended up, because of time, not being any good, they're meeting again this week.
I, I was just wondering, who told you to make assumptions that weren't passed by a city council or a board?
The retirement board adopted the assumptions.
They haven't adopted them according to.
One of the four plans, find out today, have not adopted them and they will this week.
Okay. So somebody told you, the retirement board, because it says the board approved, the retirement board, they, they told you it was approved.
Correct.
Okay.
In writing.
When did they tell you it was approved in writing?
Ernie's going to find a date of that retirement board. As soon as the retirement board had met and a vote was taken in the affirmative to support the assumptions, that's based on an experience study that came from the state, we alerted Joe that we would accept the recommended assumptions. And that was the day after they met, we'll get you a date.
And this report was completed in February? And it says the board approved and the board met in March?
This report was finalized in the last week.
Now it's finalized in the last week?
It was finalized in the last week.
Okay, so this report isn't from February, it's from March now?
The draft reports were in February, the final report was last week.
All right, so I just, I thought I asked a simple question before. Is this a report from February or March?
It's a report from March.
It's a report from March, okay.
The date of the retirement board was March thirteenth.
But they got, they, they have to have another meeting to actually approve, so.
It was an error, it had nothing, it had to do with the city of Warwick and the notification that we had, it had nothing to do with what was in the actuarial study or when we got the study or any of that.
Okay. I think I had asked you this question last year. And I think Councilman Solomon just touched on it. You tell the city what our contributions should be, not whether we can afford them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I know that percentages go up and down when there's bull markets and when you're making assumptions that people are getting four percent raises when they're not. But when you look at two thousand four, the actual contribution in dollars of all the plans for pensions was thirteen million, seven hundred thousand. And in two thousand fourteen, ten years later, it was twenty-six thou, twenty-six million, eight hundred thousand. So a little over a hundred percent increase in ten years. Now we're budgeting, instead of thirteen million, seven hundred thousand to pay pensions, we're budgeting twenty-six million, eight hundred thousand. And I know that the pensions are well-funded, et cetera, because next year, we're going to have to pay twenty-eight million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand. So we'll have another increase of two point one million dollars. And, and the percentages look good when we do that. I know from a minute ago that you just told us that you're trying to avoid a spike and you use the number two million dollars. Do you remember saying that a moment ago? Okay. Because a two million dollar spike is significant for any municipal entity to absorb, you would agree with that?
Correct.
Okay. If you saw a seventeen million dollar spike in one year, would you consider that significant?
Of course.
Of course, that's what I thought, because if a two million dollar spike is significant, a seventeen million dollar spike would be significant. So when our healthcare liabilities, which are completely unfunded, and I noticed there's no healthcare actuaries here today, goes from two hundred and sixty-three million to two hundred and eighty-one million, or seventeen million dollars in one year, as an actuary, you'd consider that significant, right?
Yes.
And this council and the administration have to figure out how to pay for that, right?
Correct.
In the budget process last year, we had a discussion about the WSA, the sewer authority, and that the sewer authority retirees didn't contribute to their pensions. Do you know how much it's costing the city each year to fund the retirees' pensions for the WSA?
Not off, no, not, not standing up here, I don't.
Does Ernie know?
No, that's part of the overall city contribution. The enterprise funds have not contributed an amount towards the overall pension for the employees.
I just had another question for Ernie. Ernie, when are the healthcare actuaries coming in?
Whenever the city council requests them to attend. This meeting was specifically for pensions.
It was, because I didn't even see that on tonight's docket. Do you have tonight's docket?
Yes, I've seen tonight's docket.
What's that?
Yes, I've seen the docket for this evening.
And, and as far as I know, Mr. Marciano was giving a presentation regarding the retirement, municipal pensions.
That's what the title was, and I believe the council's been informed for a few months that the, our actuary would be here making a presentation for the pension plan.
I found out last week that they may, and I found out on Wednesday that they would. And, you know, I, I think I got the reports on Thursday. And I didn't, I've never received the healthcare, I just got it thanks to Mr. De Pasqual. And I thank him for sending it to me. So, you know, I, I, is that something that we need to do by resolution or we just, we just ask them to come in?
Well, if the city council requests the actuary for our post-retirement healthcare benefits to attend a meeting, I'm certainly, he would attend a meeting. There may be a cost involved, but I'm sure he would be happy to attend.
I, I, and just so we're clear, the docket says that Mr. Marciano is going to be speaking about the municipal pension.
Right, I think that's.
So, I mean, what we know behind closed doors, the public doesn't know when they look at our docket. So they don't know if they wanted to discuss Fire One, Fire Two, or whatever to be here tonight. So to me, that's problematic notice, not to mention that the actuaries weren't even listed on here. But it is what it is.